Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the December 7th work session of the Portsmouth Planning Commission. And I'd like to welcome you all to this very important session. Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. Good to see everyone again in your last meeting of 2021. So we'll go ahead and get started with our work session items. The first one, a Chesapeake Bay exception, CBE 21-05, and Stacy Porter will give you the staff report on that.
Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. Today's case involves a lot that was created prior to October 1st, 1989, the inception date of our Chesapeake Bay ordinance. And I'll go ahead and read our summary. CBE 2105 West Park View, Carol T. Downing requests a Chesapeake Bay exception to maintain an unpermitted concrete patio and to complete an unpermitted second-story wood deck within the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area's 50-foot C-word buffer at 1725 A Street. And further, the applicant's request seeks to resolve a current Chesapeake Bay ordinance violation that I will give an overview of. The unpermitted development is located in that C-word buffer. The property is owned urban residential UR, is 15,000 square feet in size, and contains a 1,600-square-foot Cape Cod-style, single-family home and a 360-square-foot detached garage. As can be seen in the map on this slide, the property is nearly fully encompassed by the Resource Protection Area, which is that red color. I will now provide an overview of the surrounding area. The property is surrounded by the West Park View neighborhood, which is primarily characterized by single-family residential development. I will now provide an overview of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance violation. The applicant's contractor sought an after-the-fact building permit to construct the second-story wood deck, which is shown in the photos on this slide. Staff discovered the deck to be fully located within that C-word 50-foot buffer. In response to this discovery, staff issued a violation notice on September 8th, 2021, requiring either the removal of the structure or the filing of a Chesapeake Bay exception application to allow Planning Commission review and approval for the structure to remain. After staff received the exception application submittal, in-office aerial photography indicated that the concrete patio, which is also shown here in this photo, was added to the property without proper clearance. Today's request is to maintain the patio and complete construction on the wood deck. In total, the project encompasses approximately 200 square feet of land disturbance in that Resource Protection Area C-word buffer. As is required by the Chesapeake Bay ordinance, a land disturbance request in that Resource Protection Area requires a submittal of the Water Quality Impact Assessment. The submitted WQIA provided the required one planting unit, which is one canopy tree, two understory trees, and three shrubs. The submitted exhibit on this slide and was in your packet indicates that the selected species of canopy tree is river birch, the understory tree is indicated as American holly, and the selected small shrub is a wax myrtle. In conclusion, staff recommends the denial of the request. Staff is unable to support a violation of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance. Further, the proposal fails to meet the exception criteria outlined in Portsmouth City Code Section 9.1-12C. The proposal presents a self-imposed condition and fails to support the purpose and intent of the Resource Protection Area's 100-foot buffer. Should Planning Commission choose to approve the applicant's request, staff has provided a list of appropriate conditions for consideration. And this concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Commissioners, are there any questions of Mrs. Porter?
Hi, Ms. Porter, I do have a question. Did the applicant own the home in 2015, or when did the applicant construct the deck, I guess?
I'm not sure about ownership, and she should be present today to answer that question. We don't know what happened with that patio. We really don't know. We just looked at aerials and noticed the patio appeared around 2015. So I hope the applicant can give you what you need today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
One question I have. Have we ever approved an application in the RPA that has failed to comply with a permanent process like this?
Yes, you have. That was, ooh, I can't tell you exactly when that was, but over a year ago. It was the bottom stairs of a deck. So it was just a portion of a deck. It wasn't, like in this case, the full patio and the wood deck are fully in that Resource Protect, the C-word 50-foot Resource Protection Area buffer. Yeah.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions?
Yes, I do have one. Yes, I do have another question. Was the violation something that a neighbor called, or was it city, or did they come in, the contractor, come in to get a permit at some point?
Good question. The contractor himself came in, and she'll explain, the applicant herself should be able to explain everything, but basically, the contractor came into our office, and he mentioned that he thought that this was a grandfather use or something. He felt like it was our, the patio there, so he could build on top of it, and that was his initial intent. But something in the back of his mind told him just to come on in and try to get the permit, at least ask a question about a permit. So that's what happened.
Are there any additional questions of Ms. Porter? Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, our second item is a street name change application, SNC 21-03, and Carl Jackson will give that presentation.
I'm Carl Jackson today. Okay. All right, again, Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department, and I will provide an overview of the applicant's request, and I'll go ahead and read the summary. SNC 2103, Victory Village, Tidewater Community College requests a permanent street name change for a third-mile portion of Freedom Avenue between Victory Boulevard and Elliott Avenue from its current designation to the name TCC Drive. As is shown in this map exhibit, the proposed street naming will only involve the eastern extent of Freedom Avenue beginning at Victory Boulevard, the Victory Boulevard right-of-way, extending past the traffic circle, ending where it intersects Elliott Avenue. The western extent of Freedom Avenue will maintain its current name. I will now provide an overview of the surrounding area. All right? And to the north, under construction would be, just one second, let me get my notes, the Portsmouth Entertainment District and Rivers Casino. And the eastern, to the east, I'm sorry, is the Tidewater Community College campus. And to the south is a church, as well as the Elliott Avenue right-of-way and vacant As the Portsmouth Entertainment District and Rivers Casino site continues to develop, Tidewater Community College seeks to further articulate its presence in the area and help prospective students and visitors identify TCC's location from Victory Boulevard. TCC does not own any property along Victory Boulevard, so installing new off-site signage would not be permitted, according to the zoning ordinance. The proposed street naming is a more viable way for TCC to provide wayfinding to its campus, which currently faces McLean Street, but has a rear entrance on Freedom Avenue. In conclusion, staff recommends the approval of the request for the street name change of the eastern portion of Freedom Avenue from Victory Boulevard to Elliott Avenue to be changed from its current designation to the name TCC Drive. The proposal is consistent with the city code and supports the city's partnership with Tidewater Community College. With staff's recommended conditions, the request complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and that concludes the presentation.
Ms. Porter, could you tell us what the conditions are?
Okay. I will need to get those. So you would have those handy? I think Mr. Jackson is coming. Okay, thank you. Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. Ms. Porter has done a great job on my behalf. I'm afraid that I was out of town due to passing in my family. But generally, when we have a street closures, it's required that the applicant pay for the cost of the signage that's being installed. That was one of the conditions. They shall also comply with the Portsmouth City Code, Section 33, 1-55, for street and subdivision names, and as I mentioned before, that they shall cover all the costs that are associated with the street name change.
One last question for me. From Victory to Elliott, are there any other properties, nimbed properties, within that area?
The property is primarily owned by the Economic Development Authority. There's also a church in the vicinity, and then, of course, Tidewater Community College. Those are the only affected properties.
The church would be affected by the name change?
Not necessarily affected, they're adjacent, you know, to the site, to the location. But they wouldn't have an address change or anything like that.
They would not have an address change. Commissioners, are there any additional questions of Mr. Jackson? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our third item for this afternoon, you have a rezoning, Z21-07, and Julie Chop will give that staff presentation.
Hello, everyone. This is Julie Chop, Principal Planner with the City of Portsmouth. Sorry about that technical difficulty. So the rezoning application before you today involves a 0.61-acre parcel located at 3114 Deep Creek Boulevard. The property is within the Truxton Historic District and is currently zoned Historic Residential HR. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to Historic Limited Business, HLB, and the site is currently vacant of structures. To the west is the vacant parcel at 3120 Deep Creek Boulevard that is zoned HLB. Further west are single-family dwellings that are zoned HLB. North of the property at 3114 Deep Creek Boulevard are detached, single-family dwellings in the HR zoning district. To the east is a two-family dwelling and a church parking lot, both in the HR zoning district. South of the subject property are commercial properties zoned HLB. The proposed rezoning request for the property at 3114 Deep Creek Boulevard, from the HR Historic Subdistrict to the HLB Historic Subdistrict, will provide for residential development. The proposed development includes the property at 3120 Deep Creek Boulevard, which is currently zoned HLB. If the rezoning request is approved, the two parcels will be combined and re-subdivided through a minor subdivision application in order to develop a two-family dwelling on each parcel with a shared parking drive on. The applicant received an approved certificate of appropriateness for the design and materials of the proposed two-family dwellings at 3114 and 3120 Deep Creek Boulevard at the November 16th Historic Preservation Commission meeting. Staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning of 3114 Deep Creek Boulevard to the HLB Historic Subdistrict. The request is consistent with the city's Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan, and the proposed rezoning would provide for the use of a vacant property in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding area. Staff has determined that the proposed rezoning is appropriate for the 3114 Deep Creek Boulevard property. No comments from the public have been received, and this concludes my presentation. I will now stand by for any questions from the Commissioners.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Chop?
Hi, I do have a question. It's not necessarily for the rezoning, but I was just curious as to the materials of the building. Do you know what got approved?
I believe it has vinyl siding. It has, and a architectural shingle roof. I believe the windows are also vinyl. The Truxton Historic District does allow a lot of more common materials than the other historic districts, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions of Ms. Chop? Are there any conditions associated with this?
No, this is a straight rezoning, no conditions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I think we're now moving to the nomination, election of officers portion of your work session, and turn the floor over to Regina Jackson, your guru for this process.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Mr. Chairman, we can now discuss nominations for the 2022 Planning Commission Board.
Commissioners, are there any nominations for, you can do the chairman first. Are there any nominations for chairman for 2022, chairman of the Planning Commission?
Yes, I have one. I would like to nominate or ask Mr. Albert Williams if he would remain as the chair for 2022.
We have a nomination, are there other nominations? Madam Secretary, that concludes our nominations for the chairmanship.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now need a nomination for our vice chair for the 2022 Planning Commission.
Hi, this is Donna Coleman, I have a nominee, Sherri Thaxton.
Madam Secretary, we have nomination for the vice chairman, are there any additional There appear to be none, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have our nominations for our 2022 Planning Commission, Vice Chairman Sherri Thaxton, and our chairman, Mr. Albert Williams. We will actually do the election in our public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
You're welcome.
Mr. Baldwin?
That concludes all the staff presentations for this afternoon, unless you have any questions of us.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions or comments? There being none, let's be seated at 1:30 to begin our regular session. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, being held in the City Council chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Youngblood. Commissioner Thaxton.
Present.
Commissioner G. Commissioner Coleman.
Present.
Commissioner Page.
Present.
Commissioner Barnes.
Present.
Five members of the Planning Commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you have the minutes of the November 16th public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the approval of the previous minutes.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the November 16th, 2021 meeting. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Page.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
The minutes are approved by a vote of five to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences, our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, at 12:30 PM, City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their January 11th, 2022, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Thank you. Our first public hearing item, CBE-21-05 West Park View. Carol T. Downing requests a Chesapeake Bay exception to maintain an unpermitted concrete patio and to complete an unpermitted second-story wood deck within the Chesapeake Bay Reservation Resource Protection Area's 50-foot seawood buffer at 1725 A Street. The property is owned urban residential UR and is further described as Tax Map 60, Parcel 28. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plans Generalized Future Land Use Map recommends high-density, single-family development for the property. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Hello, good afternoon. I have submitted my application, so I did not bring anything. I understood that you had all received the application. Is there something else in writing that I would need to bring? All that was sent with Stacy Porter?
Yes, we do have that. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant?
Yes, I have a question. Can you tell me when you purchased the home?
1996.
Okay, and was the concrete patio at the home at that time?
Yes, there was a concrete patio, smaller than the one that exists now, and it was just a cracked piece of old concrete, and there was a second-floor deck. The home was originally zoned as multiple-use. There was an apartment on the second floor, so we turned it back into a single-family. And the plan was then to expand the patio a bit, build a deck on the second floor that mirrored the same footprint, and this was our aging-in-place strategy for my husband and I, since we're both very close to retirement now.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Am I permitted to have a few comments?
Sure.
Okay. So, first of all, the pouring of the patio, the new patio, I'll call it the new patio, that was in 2015, and that was completely my mistake, that a permit was not requested for that. I did not know it was required. The construction worker that we hired mentioned nothing about a permit, and I didn't pursue it, so that was my mistake. Our desire is to keep the existing patio and keep it intact, and hopefully finish the project, which would be the deck above and screened-in porch below. Again, this is a part of my husband and I wishing very much to stay in our home, you know, as we age. My husband's in his early 70s, I'm almost 70, and we're both going to be semi-retired by next June. So my desire is to keep the patio intact, if that is okay, and, of course, paying any fines for that unpermitted patio from back in 2015. And I have a question, which is that, out of concern, or maybe it's just something for you all to consider, out of concern for the land and the wetlands, which we are very concerned about, it seems to us that by going back and removing any portion of the patio, which is bigger now than it was, obviously, in 1996, would cause even more disturbance of the land, if that is the issue. And if that is not possible, may I request a permit to reduce the size of the patio a bit, which, again, would be land disturbance, but to reduce the size of the patio a bit and continue then with the deck overhead, and with or without the screened-in porch. I don't know if there's any particulars about the screened-in porch that would be a problem. So I wanted to know if that request is valid, and if you would consider that request.
Mr. Baldwin, I think what she's requesting needs to be directed to someone else.
I'm not exactly sure what the request was there. We've not seen anything regarding a screened porch. You know, all we're dealing with is the existing patio.
Right.
And the deck that was being built above it.
Okay, that's right.
That's all you have before you today.
Members of the, anything further?
Would I have any other recourse if this request is denied? And could, well, could we have an inspector come out and take a look at what's existing, and then determine whether the request to keep the patio as is, since it's been there for six years and everything's settled, and if that's not possible, what are my other recourses?
Yeah. Ma'am, I think you need to take that up with actually someone else, that's not within our purview to deal with. Mr. Baldwin?
Let me make a suggestion, based on the comments from the applicant here, that you might defer this item for 30 days, so we can have some additional conversations with her and come back with a more complete picture for the Planning Commission to consider. And since the public hearing is open, if you would just continue the public hearing, if you were to decide to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Commissioners, are there any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-21-05. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm not going to close the public hearing. Ms.
Well, we need to take a vote first. Commissioners, if there aren't any questions or discussions, is there any consideration to deferring the applicant's request for 30 days until?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to defer. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to defer CBE-21-05 for 30 days.
Commissioners, there is a motion to defer, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to defer CBE-21-05 for 30 days. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
This item is deferred by a vote of five to zero. Our next item, SNC-21-03 Victory Village. Heather Hardeman, Vice President for the Administration and Chief Financial Officer of Tidewater Community College, requests a permanent street name change for one-third of a mile portion of Freedom Avenue between Victory Boulevard and Elliott Avenue, from its current destination to the name TCC Drive, in recognition of the adjacent Tidewater Community College Portsmouth campus. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property as transportation. The property is public right-of-way owned by the City of Portsmouth. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, I am Heather Hardeman, Vice President for Administration and Chief Financial Officer of Tidewater Community College. As stated in the application, we are excited to support Portsmouth as well as the Rivers Casino, and in hope, our hope though, is that we will not become lost in the shininess of a casino, and that the citizens of Portsmouth and the residents will still be able to find and locate where TCC is, so we're requesting the change of the street name in order to bring awareness to our location.
Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Thank you, ma'am. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item SNC-21-03. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone here who would like to speak and did not get an opportunity to register, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, unless there's any further discussion or comment, the chair is in need of a motion for SNC-21-3 with conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for SNC-21-03 for approval.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a motion and a second to approve SNC-21-03. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
This item is approved five to zero with conditions. Our next item, Z-21-07 Truxton. Lord Wythe of Wythe Property LLC requests a rezoning of an approximate 0.161-acre property located at 3114 Deep Creek Boulevard, from Historic Residential HR to Historic Limited Business, HLB, to accommodate a residential development. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed residential. The property is owned by Lord Wythe and is further described as Tax Map 153, Parcel 17. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Robert Kellum, I'm the engineer for the project. The property is not a, is in the historic area of Truxton, and we've already appeared before the Historic Board, and the materials and the architecture have been approved by that board.
Sir, could you speak into the mic?
I thought I was, I'm sorry.
Some of us can't quite hear you.
I'm sorry.
Maybe it's our hearing.
Well, you know, it's funny, I have the same trouble sometimes. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. Do I need to repeat what I've just said? Okay. Okay. We have appeared before the Historic Review Board. The materials and colors will be as approved by the board. We have chosen two different colors, and the materials will be vinyl siding and hardy plank. I believe that may have been a question. This is not a spot zone type of thing, we are contiguous with another zoning, like zoning, so we are going to be in keeping with the neighborhood. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, are there any questions?
Excuse me.
There appear to be none, thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-21-07. I do have a couple of speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Mark Yedaldi-Yotrowski. You have five minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, honorable commissioners, and other neighbors. I don't have an issue with the goal here of building two duplex dwellings on adjacent pieces of property. What gives me some heartburn is the manner in which it's being done, which is to say, one property is zoned residential with a historic modifier, the other is currently zoned business with a historic modifier, and most of the properties around there are residential. The end user is intended to be residential, but you're changing the residential property to a business designation. That's counterintuitive. I'm not a planner, I haven't been through the training, and so I don't know all the nuances that are involved here. I'm an end user. I'm a citizen of Portsmouth, and I'd like for our laws and regulations to be as straightforward as possible. This is counterintuitive. If you have two pieces of property and they're zoned opposite, it seems to me you could change the business to residential because you're building residences, and then you have truth in advertising of what it is that you're doing. So there's my issue, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-21-07. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, you will have up to five minutes Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, are there any additional questions or comments? If there are none, the chair is in need of a motion for Z-21-07.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Z-21-07.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve Z-21-07. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of five to zero.
Madam Secretary, I believe the next item on our agenda is the calendar for 2022, is that correct?
Election of officers first, Mr. Chairman?
Actually, I thought we had done it in the work session.
We need the election.
That's because I'm getting too excited.
It's okay.
Nominations and election of officers, which we need to conduct at this time, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to proceed with the nomination of the officers for the Planning Commission for the year 2022. The current officers are Vice Chairman is Commissioner Peter Youngblood, and the chairman is Commissioner Albert Williams. Mr. Williams, we are now in need of a motion.
The, I'm sorry?
For the chairman.
We need a motion for the chairman of the Planning Commission for the year 2022.
I'd like to make a motion that Albert Williams remain the chairman of the Planning Commission for the year 2022.
Are there any additional nominations for chairman for 2022? The nominations are closed on the said name of Albert Williams as chairman of the Planning Commission for the year 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We need to make the vote. Commissioners, we will make a vote on this. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Albert Williams is our new president, chairman for the 2022 Planning Commission.
We need now to have a nomination for the vice chairman of the Planning Commission for the year 2022.
I'd like to nominate Sherry Thaxton for vice chairman.
We have a nomination of Sherry Thaxton for the vice chairman for the year 2022. Are there any additional nominations? There being none, the nominations are closed on the name of Sherry Thaxton, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Our new vice president is Sherry Thaxton for the year 2022. Congratulations.
Let me thank you for your support and your continued support for the Planning Commission. The next item on the agenda, Madam Secretary, is the approval of the 2022 Planning Commission calendar?
That is correct. I need a motion to approve the calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2022 planning calendar.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the 2022 calendar for the Planning Commission. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
The calendar for our 2022 Planning Commission is approved by a vote of five to zero.
Commissioners, is there any other further business we need to conduct this afternoon? If not, I would like to take the opportunity to express my sincere thanks to Commissioner Youngblood and Commissioner Gee, who have served the commission well during their time on the board. Commissioner Youngblood has served for a period of seven years, Commissioner Gee has served for a period of six years. Unfortunately, they're not with us today, we would have shook their hands and sung a song. But because they're not here, I won't have to sing today. But we would like to express our deep appreciation for both of them. We do have plaques coming for them that they will receive at a later time. Mr. Baldwin, is there any further business?
No, Mr. Chairman, I have no further business.
Commissioners, again, is there any further business we need to conduct today? There being none, this meeting is now adjourned.